Seven thirty and I'll open the plan commission. I'd like to welcome all our guests, this house I've never seen in quite a while. Appreciate everyone coming, but we'll put simulation for later on as to how long humans could speak. That's kind of how we've all been done, about two or five minutes. Rather than teach the same thing that somebody else said before, they'll come out later on. Do you have a form, in fact, we have a hundred percent participation. Put your pledge on the planning commission minutes of August twenty-three. No meeting set for twenty-seven, no meeting October twenty-five. We can say, so motion taken second, all the people back in on the same ass. All opposed, same side, motion carried. Got a whole business, now some other whole business. We've built a new business, got a new package. Guess it's forced to put them somewhere. Oh, project. Was to look at, just to get more information next month with Daniel.
Yes.
Panel areas, access roads, interconnection facilities. The project will utilize single access tractor technology, which allows the panels to be mounted and rotate throughout the day to optimize production. This facility will produce enough electricity to power roughly twenty-one thousand homes every year. And we're going to be interconnecting to the Dominion one hundred and fifteen kilovolt transmission line that runs through the the project site. And this project is designed to function for up to forty years. Some general things about solar, but also pertaining to this project, the, once constructed, the the project will not, using the artificial lighting, will not produce any audible noise. Or any kind of emissions at all, the only equipment that produces noise on these types of developments are inverters that convert electricity from DC to AC. And those sound similar to an air conditioning unit, so if you're more than like a hundred feet away, you would not be able to hear those. Those are typically in the interior of a project because it's more efficient to design them those that way. It will be screened from nearby homes and and roads. Mostly because of the the existing topography and vegetation of this area. It's it's in a fairly remote part of the county and we, as I'll go through in just a minute, are really being thoughtful about how we can, you know, be mindful of neighboring properties and limit any kind of exposure visually or otherwise. It is a temporary and passive use of the land once constructed, it requires very little onsite maintenance or visitation. And we are required to post a decommissioning bond that is alongside a decommissioning plan that basically ensures that equipment is removed at the end of its useful life and that land is restored to its current condition. In terms of the panels themselves, they're relatively unsophisticated, it's essentially silicon wafers with a glass coating and aluminum frame, there's no fluids or chemicals or anything like that that would bleach or or leak into the soil and those are under warranty to complete for at least twenty-five years, even after that, they're functioning at ninety percent of their initial capacity. This slide shows the the layout of the project, this is the conceptual layout that will include our permit application. Again, I'd like to point out that I think that this is for a site this big, it is well-succined, we are directly on that transmission line, don't have to build any kind of connector to get to where we want to put power on the grid. And there are significant natural buffer areas that will remain intact to, you know, protect any kind of visual impacts. Excellent. We did hold a community meeting in May where we invited neighboring property owners to to learn about the project and also ask any questions and you know, any any concerns. We did take feedback from that meeting and make some changes to our, we initially, this this slide shows West Creek Road, kind of all the the eastern boundary of our project, we initially proposed being closer to that, we have since decided to pull back from West Creek Road, so now we're showing, you know, over two thousand feet of setback along that road. And it slopes away from West Creek Road, so the visual impact from there is is really negligible. Similarly, on, this is showing Dennisville Road to the the northeast, we are staying to the southwest of the existing transition corridor, so again, we're, we're going to be at least three hundred and fifty feet back from the road, which is, you know, still well above from the kind of setback that the ordinance would require. And we're we're still almost a thousand feet from from West Creek, up at that part of the project. The northern boundary of the project is Porthouse Road and the closest we get to that is between six and seven hundred feet. And that's kind of looking uphill, so again, you you really won't have much of a view driving down that road either. Excellent. The western bounds of the project is Buckskin Creek Road. When we moved panels from from West Creek, we decided to put on the the western part of the project, but we're staying to the east of a of a large stream that runs down the hill of the, our soul releasing and preserving something like a thirteen-hundred-foot buffer as well as a vegetated stream that will essentially screen that part of the project as well. Excellent. We heard from another individual who had expressed some concerns about looking out his back door, he lived on the west side of of West Creek Road. And I just wanted to point out that there is a large wetland system that runs along the eastern part of this project that we will not impact, there's also a forested area that that is adjacent to that. And that will remain intact, which is, you know, another at least a thousand feet of vegetative buffer for those folks along West, uh, West Creek Road. In terms of project timeline, we, you know, we're looking to get, get our permits in the next six to eight months. Of course, we need the special exception from Amelia County. We began the interconnection study process over a year and a half ago and and gotten some favorable results from that from the utility thus far. We also need to get a state permit by rule, which is administered by DEQ. As part of that permit, there are extensive other studies we have to do ranging from environmental and endangered threat species surveys, a full cultural and historic resources survey, and any wetland permits. So the goal would be to begin construction in the fall of twenty-twenty-two and then be online producing energy by the end of twenty-twenty-three. That was all pretty quick, but I wanted to keep it brief for you all because I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this point, but I just wanted to thank you again for your time.
What is the megawatt?
The the megawattage is up to one hundred and six megawatts, it's it's anywhere between eighty-six and one hundred and six megawatts. We've submitted, you know, the request with the utility. Depending on the results of that last twenty megawatts, you go from that range.
What percent of this is crop land, what percentage is forest land and cover forest?
We're all kind of that. As of now, I mean, we're only, really only impacting it, the the site that's under current active crop cultivation is actually a very small percentage of the acres we're impacting. We have those big acre fields on West Creek Road, we are not going to panels on, and those are actually the largest fields that of any of the land we have unreleased that that are on active cultivation, there is a seventy-acre field off Dennisville that we may be putting panels on. And then another similarly sized field on the other side towards Buckskin Creek, but it's primarily under pine forests and then that's actually a lot of that has been walked very recently and and is not under active.
So you totally cleared that off. In land and work it up to set your panel.
So we would, we would clear it and rub it and then we would seed it with a stabilizing, you know, meadow-like condition and that would be maintained for the life of the project.
Fence around the whole thing, or to fence around different sections, about one about the wildlife moving through there on the fields that are left, you farm with the thing left. Here ain't, you know, that.
Right, I mean, the the way there, there are wetlands on this site that will break out the lay, break out the layout, so we wouldn't necessarily be putting a a fence around.
To be pretty much somewhat five fence. Now I've got two solo projects going inside of me right now. But I do know how what they're doing. But those, they're smaller and they're fencing.
Right.
Are you going to have to put any retention pods in or like, or you don't know yet?
We don't know yet, I mean, we would have, we have to get a stormwater permit and the county would have input on that, but we haven't. That's something that we engineered, you know, at the site, kind of the site plan phase of the project.
So the panels about the last twenty-plus years. Twenty years, no, last, you know, five years, we've all got the yield. Similar to that, or these are pretty much the same panels we've been using since you went in the Midwest.
So the panels are, they're under warranty for twenty-twenty-five years, so the manufacturer, you know, guarantees them for that long. They last longer than that and and you know, barring any extreme event, you know, you wouldn't expect them to really degrade beyond being useful. And and we would also be under every, you know, incentive to replace anything that would be damaged anyway and continue, you know, producing power. Regardless, but again, the those panels, they do degrade every time, but they still, they hold, you know, up to ninety percent of, if you're ninety percent of their function.
Yeah, yeah, we get, get right on the electric panel. I'm not on the menu. I mean, these are questions that'll come up for you, I just wanted to throw them at you for you. I had, I was thinking it's a tax base. You pay taxes on land like, and is it different with houses or different than farm land or?
So we would be paying
or does, if they're the owner pay the taxes and takes it out with y'all.
So we were, we would be paying, you know, if there, the areas that are under land, yes, we'd be paying goldback taxes on and they would, we would also be paying taxes on, you know, proper, the equipment as well, so I don't know if you want to add these to that, but yeah, I would say the, you know, there's a few different, a few different revenue streams through the county. You got land that comes out of land use, that's kind of upfront payment. Now, the land that's no longer in ag, the real estate is taxed at a higher rate. But the biggest is the personal property. And it would be a pretty, it would be in the, in year one, it would be in the six figures in the personal property tax. Kind of depends on the exact size of the project, but it it appreciates very slowly, it's not like like machinery and tools, so it lasts. I think it's like a forty-year depreciation and and that would be paid every year to the county.
Proven, it's a solar panel, so.
Exactly.
I've got any questions, I don't think they're going to want to commission to ask Westside question.
Are there any proffers in the?
It will have condition.
Bond for torch, the decommission, so at the end of their life. Is there some kind of, kind of inflation that would be for years? So I believe, the ordinance requires that that value be reevaluated every five years. And so that, that decommissioning plan we have to submit with our special exception and it, you know, has has that provision as well.
Not a concern for us. Print it out, read it over. Have the projects I have so close. Both of them, you know, one is out of South Carolina, I only have the other just in the, I assume that's, I mean, if the county is nobody's, the panels, I guess, are clear and I'll bet it. I guess you really use those, those to add it in.
It's, I mean, it's it's always our preference to try to, you know, use local firms as much as we can, I mean, that sometimes scale can be a challenge, but I mean, that's our preference and that it's also, I mean, economically it makes sense.
I heard from one, this is driveway, a big south, big four actually project has a surrender, they're probably on some size. There's only like a fifty-foot barrier between their property and the project. The opportunity to make that wider in some places where companies are nearby. The value of their property now such a high story, anything like that, it's all the needs job.
At this, we're not, we're not permitting a battery. We're not, it's just, we would be looking at some station to connect to that line. We essentially have to cut the line, build a substation, rope in that one, we're not, at this time, we're not permitting a battery.
Any more questions for Sam or Wes? Certain appreciate you. At least going around to the neighbors and bringing it onto so ahead, people thinking that that'll help your project do a lot better, chance. Thanks again for coming, we'll see you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Next new business item is rezoning. Uh, Callan Walker from an RR three to an R ten, Holly bring us up to date. Then we'll go from there.
All right, so this is our quest for rezoning for RR three rural residential to R ten residential with a ten-acre minimum lot size. This property is located on South Amelia Avenue, approximately one-half mile west of Broad Meadow Drive. And it's located in the rural residential community area of the cop land. The applicant and co-owner, Callie Walker, intends to divide the property into ten-acre lots, which is the minimum lot size committed in that zoning district. Currently in RR three, you cannot subdivide, that's the necessity for resounding to R ten, because of RR three, you can only do family lots and large lots. Each lot would contain a single-family dwelling and a mini farm. Mrs. Walker does not intend to create all ten lots at once, she will start with one lot and then create more lots as needed, so she's planning to phase it. This project was routed to VDOT for comment, but I have not yet received comments from them. In R ten, the minimum required road frontage is three hundred and fifty feet per lot, with the exception of flag lots, which are permitted. It's not Ms. Walker's intention to build a new road yet, but she is aware that after she's exhausted the road frontage, she will have to build a road into the property up to VDOT standards. The comprehensive plan states that the intention of the rural residential community area is to respect agricultural uses and encourage expansion, encourage interparcial connectivity to decrease impacts on the roads, discourage further residential road frontage development, and require combined entrances for residential lots. Ms. Walker's project meets the expansion of agricultural uses and having combined entrances, but will create additional road frontage development, which is discouraged in this planning area. Um, a few things that have been suggested that are taking place, I know a lot of people received a packet of information with several different proposals on it. In R ten, which is what is being proposed, there cannot be retirement centers, any kind of communal living, nothing like that, that is not part of this proposal at all. All that is being proposed tonight is just to divide the one hundred and two acres into ten, ten-acre lots. So that's all I have for you all, but I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I'm sure Ms. Walker would like to say some as well.
Do any commissioners have any questions for opening here?
Yes, uh, to the last page, I think. The proposed development aligns with expansion of agriculture, but if only built out, may not align with other intentions of the conference of plan for the area. What's meant by that?
Um, the road frontage portion, it discourages future road frontage development, and this would have that.
How does that come in with?
So initially, she's not going to build the road, she has a pretty sizable amount of road frontage now. And in R ten, each lot has to have three hundred and fifty feet of road frontage, so she's got some leeway. But after, I think it's three lots, she has to build that B dot road to B dot space and bond it and everything, if she gets to the three lots.
So even with the B dot, it's still not within the tensions.
Once the B dot road is built, that will align with the cop plan because that's on a new road, not an existing road.
So she hasn't born enough land three, three hundred and fifty foot and still get the twenty-five foot B dot, twenty-two foot B dot road.
And her intention is to start with just one. Um, and I got to see how it goes and then build two additional cuts as needed. So she's not going to come in, so normally with these, they come in and divide up all the lots at once, we sign the subdivision plan and they're on their way. She's planning to do it in a phased approach, so just doing them as she sees fit, as she's getting demand for people wanting to move onto the property.
All right, some of this property is timber from the map, I assume. Is she going to clear that for these people to farm on or how's that going to be affected? Because I mean, that's a great expense. I assume she'd have to clear cut it, stump it.
Yes.
That way.
Yeah, her first one is going to be near the front, so probably wouldn't be far enough back, but yes, if she gets past probably two or so less, she would have to clear cut at least a portion of it to get those back there and to farm on.
Any setback for the house off that road?
Yeah.
Just normal setback.
One hundred.
One hundred feet.
And then forty on the sides and.
You don't have to have any questions before we open it up?
In, um, in this paperwork, it mentions, has that changed since we got this?
No, um. Ms. Walker has very large plans for her property. But at this time, she's just wanting to do the ten-acre lots and the mini farms. Down the road, she very well might want to come back and apply for those things, but it would be on a different piece of property, it would have to get reset again. So the adult care facilities and all of that are not permitted by right in R ten.
Any more questions?
So basically, what we're talking about tonight is just the start, not all the fine tuning as she has proposed of the Alzheimer's living.
Right, none, none of that is covered.
So we're not at all touching that tonight, we're touching simply our first project.
If she wants to do any of those things, she would have to come back and get property rezoned or apply for special exception permits, none of those things are permitted by right in R ten.
Any more questions for opening up?
What would it have, what zoning Doug allows that, or what would it have to be rezoned to if she went that way?
Exceptional. RR three.
Um, no, not exactly, so for for an adult care facility, it would be a special exception permit, and that's a special exception permit in her current zoning district and in the opposed zoning district. A lot of the uses are the same, the big difference is that in R ten, you can subdivide and in R one, you should not. But a lot of the uses permitted by special exception are the same.
Okay.
Any more questions? Well, some, wait a minute, I have to open the public hearing first, ma'am, she said she couldn't hear, you can't hear. I was asking if any more questions from the planning commission members. Then we will open it up for people to speak. Then we'll shut it down and then the planning commission members can ask more questions from the if they have questions from those who spoke. But if you can't hear, just raise your hand or holler and we'll try to get it so you can, so we'll try speaking up, I'm sorry. Now, open the public hearing up, like I said, we'd like three to five minutes. State your name and address so we can make a record of it, the minutes. And if I think you're running over five minutes, I'll ask you to sit down. That gives everybody an opportunity to speak. And we'd like, you only speak one time. Certainly until everybody's gone through. Everybody understand that? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Who would like to speak first, just be sure to state your name and address, that's all I ask.
All right, I've gotten three letters and I will normally greet them before the public hearing, but if the letters are from someone who's here, I'll let you speak instead. Um, Janina, Robert Parks, do you want me to read your letter or do you want to speak? Has something changed in regards to, I guess, how they will give into your neighborhood, your already property? And what was intended for the property? Do you want to come up here? Yes, come on.
Everybody understand her question? I'll do it. You state her question again, Holly.
Yes, Ms. Parks asked if something has changed with Ms. Walker's proposal since she gave the information to her neighbor.
Okay.
My name is Callie Walker.
My name is Callie Walker, ninety two hundred South Amelia Avenue. Um, when I finally got this rezoning application together, I took copies of it to all the adjoining neighbors. And well, the ones that live were on their property. Uh, and also took a larger vision statement that has to do with multiple projects that go beyond this zoning that aren't part of this application. So I absolutely hope to develop a retirement center for, um, fifty five and older living on what I think of as a kind of an Amelia scale and model. Um, but I'm not there yet. That's an enormous research project. That's just an enormous research project. So I took the advice of Holly in her position and her predecessor in this position and put it into pieces and applied for the zoning that they thought fits for the farming portion. Uh, I, I had a hard time deciding where to start tonight, kind of with my story. But I've got two main driving motivations. The biggest one is food ministry. Dan is my husband back there in the yellow vest. Dan and I were involved in food ministry when we were first married and lived in the mountains. We saw the power of nourishing food to help health and the power of cheap food to hurt health. We were aware of quite a few local food growers when we lived in Floyd County, and we thought that if the trucks stopped coming to the food line, the locals there might be able to figure out how to keep that community fed. I felt pretty sure that back here in my hometown where I knew I was inheriting a family farm, that might not be the case. If the trucks stopped bringing food to our food line, could Amelians and Amelia farmers manage the food needs? I might be wrong to think that we will see local food crises within my lifetime. But in case I'm right, I would like to see more and more local food growers. So it seems to me that the very most important thing I have to offer my community in years ahead is to develop a little collective of food growers. It is my highest priority. It's not my most longstanding priority though. My most longstanding priority goes back to growing up in school here in Amelia County. And that one is to work on bridging the gap between black and white. Even way back when I was still in high school, I can remember being part of a prayer group about this. Later I worked with a youth ministry in a ninety percent black community in Philly. The best mentors I have ever had came from that time period and were mostly black pastors. Then I was given training by the Methodist that was called healing the wounds of racism. And that gave me the really clear, uh, certainty that I only believe God made one race, and that's the human race. Everything else is a division that hurts us. And we can only work on those divisions intentionally. We don't succeed in working on those divisions by accident or by hoping. Towards the end of my life, my dad used to, toward the end of his life, my dad used to ask me, isn't there something you can do to get the black and white churches together? What a great question, y'all. I believe that all of us can find our best future through intentional efforts to be more together and more local. That's the kind of stuff I want to work on. Um, I know I'm gonna age. I know I'm gonna age without children. I want to collect young people who will feel like I'm a fond elder to them, and I want to create the kind of setting that I want to age in, that I think will be great for me forty years from now. I do want to say, I hope the planning commission will, um, give me advice. I'm sure I need advice. I've been coming to your meetings for about a year, kind of learning how this flows. And you guys, you ask hard questions. I'm sure you're gonna ask questions I don't know the answers to. But maybe you can give me advice. Maybe you can defer me a month and tell you, okay, get straight about this and that and come back again. Uh, at any rate, that's my piece.
All right, you heard Ms. Walker speak and answer the question. Anyone else like to speak? Don't be bashful.
Ms. Barbara Gunter.
Okay.
At eighty twenty South Amelia Avenue. I have a wonderful barn and my whole family is there. I see no need of giving Callie this to let her run with it because he will take a mind. She never knows when to stop, and I don't want my lifestyle changing up to where what she's gonna do.
Does your land, uh, touch her land or?
But I would like to walk around my land and not be worried about anybody that I'm not familiar with.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm totally opposed to it.
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. Just standing up. I mean, I got a lot of hands.
If I come up?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, first I'd like to say, um, the petition that was provided to you all today, it's a petition in opposition. And it's been signed by sixty seven individuals.
Get your name and address real quick.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Hazel Graves and I live at one seven seven nine one Rowan Meadows Drive. It's in Rowan Meadows subdivision. And it's a half mile from the subject property.
Okay.
Um, quickly back to the petition. If we had more time, we'd have gotten a lot more signatures. Um, our subdivision is a cul-de-sac. It's completely residential and consists of five and ten acre homesites with single family homes. We've worked long and hard for our little piece of heaven here in Amelia County. We love the quiet, clean, and safe rural living and certainly do not want it disturbed, nor do we want our property values adversely affected. There are three residential subdivisions off of Amelia and South Amelia Avenue, consisting of thirty seven single family homes. There are numerous other residences facing Amelia and South Amelia Avenue, both before and after reaching the acreage owned by the walkers. The subject property is just two and a half miles from our beautiful courthouse. As the rezoning request states, these one hundred and two acres will be donated and retitled to Central Virginia Agrarian Commons if you approve this rezoning. This property will become communal in nature or, as Ms. Walker has stated herself, an intentional community. Do not want or need such a social movement here in Amelia. We certainly do not want an agrarian community within our larger residential communities. Any of you hope that near your homes? The definition of agrarian is a person who advocates a redistribution of property, especially as part of a social movement. Callie Walker is already on the local agrarian commons board as community stakeholder for her farm. I have researched agrarian commons and agrarian trust. Agrarian trust and various agrarian commons are nonprofit and they pay no federal taxes. Agrarian commons have five oh one C two status and the trust has five oh one C three status. Various agrarian commons are landholding subsidiaries of agrarian trust, paying likely earn zero profit and therefore would not pay property or income taxes. However, these farmers and trading will likely qualify for various state and local assistance. In addition, please note that if Central Virginia Agrarian Commons or Agrarian Trust become the owner of these one hundred and two acres, it will remain there forever. It cannot otherwise be sold or used for any other outside purpose. The information I've shared here regarding agrarian commons and agrarian trust is as stated on the agrariantrust.org website, therefore can be verified. I'm very opposed to this rezoning. Residential community is no place for the purposes proposed by these property owners.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I'll stay in my three minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Martin Cockle, one six two eleven Church Street. Um, this has brought to my attention through some channels and I thought it was kind of innocent enough. Um, it seemed like kind of a pipe dream, kind of wishy washy, nothing really concrete to come, but between the board and us, maybe for such a big, I mean, a hundred acres split up ten ways. It seemed like a lot for something that wasn't really planned out. And then I started doing the digging and like was mentioned, agrarian trust, which is also associated with the parent organization, the Schumacher Society. Um, I would not believe this if I didn't read it with my own eyes on paper. I, I can't believe some of the stuff we found digging. Uh, I mean, these are radical, radical social groups. Um, most of what they preach is pretty much blatant communism. It, it's crazy. It sounds crazy, but it's right there on their website. Please, by all means, look it up. I posted everything I can find. I just, I, I can't believe it's so out there. It's so, so crazy. Um, but it's true. And that's what we're looking at is this is pipe dream without really definitions. We're not sure where it's going to go. What are we opening up the door to here tonight if we approve this? What, what are we letting in? What are we opening up the door to in our own backyard? That is really my, my biggest concern. I think that's a lot of people's concerns here tonight is what, what, what can worms are we opening up? What is this Pandora's box? What, what's going on here really? So that's, that's about it.
Next.
My name is Cindy Willet. I live at eighty five forty eight Woodland Drive, which is very, which is just on the road from this project. Want to state that I'm a new resident here. I moved here in June, just went through the courthouse commons battle and want to describe Amelia, which we love dearly as if we lived here our whole lives as quaint. And the definition of quaint, from the dictionary, is pleasing or strikingly old fashioned, unusual or different in character, marked by skillful design, marked by beauty or elegance. That describes Amelia to a T. And, you know, people have heard people say, well, it's family and they can do what they want. We're all part of a community. We're all a neighbor to somebody and it all impacts us. And we don't have to change things. One thing that I learned at the public hearing on courthouse commons is people love Amelia. They're passionate about Amelia and they want things to stay as is. They don't want these zoning changes. They didn't buy into this community to have these significant zoning changes. And they're asking for the status quo to be maintained. And as the gentleman before me mentioned, you're opening up a huge Pandora's box when you entertain these proposals. Um, the other thing that I would like to say, I know that you're not commenting on the vision for her project, but on the ten, dividing it into ten lots, but in her vision, she did bring up, uh, the race issue in her comments this morning. When I read the vision for her farm committee, I couldn't get past the first paragraph. And, and the first paragraph said that we would like to pass it on to descendants of people of color. So she only wants to open this project after people of color. That's racist to me. I thought we have laws in this country against it being racist. And but the fact that the planning commission would support a racist project like this, where it's only going to be open to a certain color of people is wrong in my book. It should be, it should be open to everyone, not just a, a certain segment of society. Um, I, I found that to be very offensive. And finally, I'd like to conclude, I walked past her property, which she's clear cut. It's ugly. It's been clear cut. I mean, she talks about the land and nature and preserving everything. She clear cut a number of acres of her property, which is her right to do, left all the debris. The animals are gone, the birds are gone, and we drive and walk by this eyesore every single day. So I find her love of, um, nature and beauty a little sanctimonious on her part, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I would like to respond to the clear cut that I am not the owner of that property. It went to one of my siblings, not to me.
Well, any cut, any timber, this cut is normally clear cut and reseeded, so, uh, that's just normal in any agricultural project, so. So I know a lot of people don't like to cut the timber, but you know, that's, that's their crop, like you would plant corn or something that you just do it every so often. Next.
My name is Aleisha Somerville. Um, I live at ninety two hundred South Amelia Avenue. So I live with Dan and Callie. Um, I'm white and Callie has made some land for me to farm, so I just wanted to put that out there that it's not, it's not racist. She wants to truly include all races. I just wanted to say that. Um, also, uh, you know, it's kind of a shame to meet and see so many neighbors, you know, in this kind of situation, but we, I'm only speaking for myself here. I truly do want to be a blessing to the neighborhood. Um, so being a farmer is kind of messy work, um, but I'm happy. I'm open to input. I'm open to, you know, I just, I want to put that out there. Um, as kind of part of this group that, you know, think Callie, you know, asked for input and didn't really get any until here, you know? And I, I think, uh, I can speak for Callie and myself and everyone else involved that we really want input. We want to, you know, figure out a path that works for everyone, you know? If we don't get your input, we're just gonna, you know, move forward in the best way we think, so.
I have some input for you. Do you pay taxes?
Yeah.
In this county?
Yeah. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ed Rogerbill. I live at ninety eight thirty Nautzill Lane. Uh, my question is, I'm a little confused. And as someone who has gone through the process of having property rezoned for the purpose of residential construction, I'm a little bit confused. She's applying, uh, to have a rezoned to R ten, but is making it public knowledge that that's not really what she wants. She, you know, eventually she wants to, to go on to something else. It would seem to me, and this is my opinion only, that if, you know, she wants a special use permit, that's what she should be applying for now. If she, if, if she's applying for the R ten for residential construction to build houses on, on these lots, that's fine because that, it appears to me that's what she's applying for. But she's already stated that that's not her goal. So if, if that's not her goal, then she should be applying for the special use permit now. And instead of going, uh, to break it up into residential lots and then trying to change it down, down the road. That, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'd love to respond to that one too, that the county recommended I apply for R ten for one hundred and two acres. Plan community development for sixteen acres. Plan community development is a much more extensive planning and application. No secrets here, folks. This is just the process that I'm in the middle of.
How about the trust?
The agrarian trust.
Definitely sticking to the trust.
That is my plan. Now I'm gonna look over a little what's been said here tonight, but my knowledge and experience of them is very positive.
Good evening. My name is Allison Cruz. I live on Ferguson Road. A lot of you know me already and a lot of you don't, but I will introduce myself to you to say that I live at the ass end of our landfill, which I'm very thankful for. A lot of revenue. So I'm very aware and conscientious of being a good neighbor. And I'll just start before I prepare to say that I know in my heart, Callie would be a worthy one. And I'm thankful she's my neighbor. So I'm here this evening to voice my support for the vision and dream of Callie Walker. Helping others is her nature and giving back is her faith. Her community spirit shines in how she spends her time, her energy, and her efforts. Callie's contributions to our world here in Amelia are positive, uplifting, and empowering. I'm an advocate for her mission and I hope you all will be the same. Thank you. Blessings.
Thank you, Allison.
Bye.
Next.
My name is Kent Pillow. My wife and I live at ninety two oh one South Amelia Avenue. We are pretty much directly across from Callie's, uh, property. I'm not going to regurgitate everything that's been said because a lot of what I have written down pretty much has been said already. Um, my feeling basically is, Uh, my feeling basically is Amelia and South Amelia Avenue are pretty much a vibrant community, a residential area. I think it's kind of grown past the point of an agricultural farmland like Cali is opposing. Uh, in, in, in short nature, I wrote some stuff down, you know, the, uh, zone three versus zone 10. And residential is the primary priority of RR3, but in R10, it becomes more, it's secondary to the agricultural nature. Well, I think these two streets are beyond that. We are now a vibrant community right here in the shadow of Amelia courthouse. So I am opposed to this rezon.
I would also like to say that we have moved here. We've only been here a year. And we moved here because of the county, because of being able to walk around, to walk down the road and not be fearful of not being able to walk down the road, to ride our bikes down this road, to be able to talk to our neighbors, to walk. And I just don't feel like that this is the right thing for this particular area of Amelia County.
Thank you.
And we did not get them. They did not come to see us. Whether they don't know us, but we live right across the road and we are opposed.
Yes, ma'am.
Valerie Morris, are you here? Okay, I'm in. Sure. No problem.
Listen up. Listen up.
I would like to introduce myself as a concerned Amelia County resident. This is Valerie Morris and I'm not sure for address. Okay. 23 years ago, my husband and I searched for land to build our dream home. We carefully chose our 10 acres in the Rolling Meadows subdivision as it had a set of rules and guidelines to protect our investment, such as minimal square footage requirements, limitations on the number of domestic animals and other standards to protect our property. We have been informed of Dan and Cali Walker's request to change the zoning of their property on South Amelia Avenue. They're requesting a change from RR3 to R10. We are also aware of their dream to convert their property into an agrarian trust. We are aware that they hope to dedicate their 118 acres to provision of helpful foods, eco village retirement center, sustainable family home places, caring services for physically disabled people, the Good Neighbors Education Farm, and lastly Sabbath spaces for residents, neighbors, visitors, walkers, preachers, et cetera. We feel that their pipe dreams of an agrarian trust will have an enormous negative effect on not only their neighbors, but also the entire county of Amelia. Our county currently does not have the needed infrastructure to handle the volume of variables and potential issues of their dream of an agrarian trust. What will be the required square footage for the dwellings to be built on the property? What are the structural expectations, including acceptable building materials, stone, vinyl brick, et cetera? How many individuals will be permitted to reside in each dwelling and on each projected parcel? Will these individuals have their own private mode of transportation and legal driving privileges? Or is the county planning to develop a mass transit system? The Walker family has voiced a desire to cater to immigrants. Is the county prepared to provide various translator at DSS, police, Amelia Health Department, local medical providers, the court's fire and rescue probation? Is the county prepared to hire more paid EMT, police and firefighters to handle the possible volume of this endeavor? I understand if this any request is permitted, then the Walkers plan to donate their 118 acres to the Central Virginia Agrarian Commons, turning the property into a 501(c) exempt from paying taxes. Will the residents of Amelia County be expected to endure increased tax rates to absorb the costs of these projected programs in residence? These are just a few of my questions and concerns. They hope to attract transient individuals in order to give them a chance to learn to farm. She also mentioned having some type of a halfway home for transients and others with mental and physical disabilities. Do the Walkers possess the clinical skills to take care of these individuals? As a behavioral health provider for over 26 years, I have worked firsthand with the homeless and transient populations as well as the series mentally ill. I understand the resources that are required to assist these individuals. I'm also very aware of our current county resources. Again, I do not feel that our county is equipped to handle this endeavor. The Morris family strongly opposes this zoning request change. One family's pipe dream will affect in one fashion or another all of Amelia's residents. Feel free to contact me at the number of the left.
Next.
My name's Dublin Glenmore, 11801 Wagner Lane. Really wasn't prepared to speak, but, uh, I find it a little, it's always dismaying people in subdivisions, often don't want another subdivision being built there. Even though that's where they live. Most often, especially here in Amelia, it's on what used to be farmland. So I think it's a sad, sad day here in Amelia where, uh, Amelians are scared of vegetable farms. So if you don't want to live near a farm, why even come to this camp? Stay down in Chesterfield. That's about all I got to say. I mean, that's where he's going.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Will Jackson. I live in Chesterfield, but I have a farm next to Cali Walker. I'm her brother. It's hard to start a farm. Uh, you have to be will land, cattle, different things. Uh, Amelia needs to help farmers start. I don't know what programs they have, but what Cali is doing would help farmers start. People who, who want to start and don't have the means to do that. Now, there may be some other problems with their application. I'm not familiar with agrarian trust. I guess the question I have, if I'm allowed to ask the question, are there any land trusts in Amelia where land can't be developed? Has that been done before?
There is.
And is this communist? I mean, is there a problem? Do you like it? I mean, don't people not want houses to be built? Don't they want it to stay agricultural? What is the problems that you've had with the, the trusts?
It's been no problems. It's just most of it goes in timber, stays there. No have, no development.
And that's a, but most people want no development, right? Isn't that the point?
That's just the owner of the land puts it in a trust because they do not want it developed.
Okay.
I have a question here. First of all, who is she going to be in?
I don't know that.
And the, uh, also, also, who's going to pay the guy right?
Could you state your name and address, sir? Thank you, sir. We need that for the record.
I can get some answers to that question. Uh, folks that we have interviewed or that have died during farming events in the county usually have met through the Virginia Association of Biological Farmers. Often they are graduates of Virginia Tech or Virginia State Universities. Virginia State University runs a small farm outreach program. That too has been sorts of people who think Amelia could be a good location for them. We are not interested in transients. We do not believe that immigrants want their income to depend on farming. They want their income to be something dependable from a weekly penny god they have said huh. So that's not the target audience. That's not the target audience. Yes, we are friendly to immigrants. Absolutely. I speak Spanish. Do lots of that interpreting somebody was talking about. Can I ask you a question? You plan to move this into a, a nonprofit organization, like a South of the P K, correct? I plan to donate land to agrarian trusts who will work with me collaboratively to develop a farming community. I don't know the land tax implications, the land is under by my power.
Yeah, it's right on the website. If you want to look at that.
Yep.
Anyone else like to speak before I close it?
I'm Bob Perrin. I live at 18980 Harrison Road. My property does join Cal's, with Nick's Creek. My biggest question, and maybe something has changed, but I think Cali just touched it. Speaker, the intention is to donate the property, it is rezoned to R10 to a nonprofit organization. If that is the case, they take ownership of the title and deed. As a nonprofit, will they pay property taxes?
No.
So the county loses income on property taxes. If that's the case, then are we setting a precedent for the county for other farmers to do the same thing? What happens to our taxpayers? That's a question I have.
Thank you, sir. Got a question I can answer, sir.
Yes, my name is Barbara Abbott. I live at 177 Rolling Meadows Drive. And when this came to my attention, I was rather horrified. Like everyone else has expressed almost every concern that I had. Uh, in fact, I already am. Uh, one of my major concerns is the tax base. And just like the gentleman before he said, you are recent going to set a precedent and let people that own large tracts of lands, give them to a trust where they can live there the rest of their life tax free, the rest of us poor souls or, you know, I'm retired. I know how it is. You guys so much money and pay our taxes and live the good life. I'm also concerned, uh, I'll just go over these quickly. Adult daycare, that's something that she wants to have for people who are mentally challenged. Okay. And I live very close to where that property is. I don't want to feel like I had people assessing my property. Gee, you know, maybe I could break in there. Don't like that idea. Uh, church campground. Is that going to be year round? Uh, greenhouse, they already have a greenhouse there. What are they going to be growing in greenhouse? Detached dwelling units, how large? How many families? Now, when we're talking families, we've got children. That means their school systems and like they say, they may or may not be immigrants. We may have death interpreters. It's a big project. Uh, 20 person house, that was mentioned. I mentioned that. I did write a letter to the monitor. Uh, she mentioned their boarding house and told the neighbor for 20 people. That's why I put it in there. Okay. My, my mistake. Uh, I am also concerned about sewage and more of the back of this land. There's a land, uh, low land, so protected land. You go putting 20 more houses. What do we want there? For sewage. It could be a few of the other problems I was saying. Uh, public menace. Uh, people have touched on that. I'm a single woman. I live by myself. Uh, I don't want to sit in front of that, you know? My gun's hanging on the bedpost, but I don't want to use it. Okay. It's a cock and load. Uh, public menace. You know, fighting people that have no stock. If they don't own the land, is there a heart there? You can get all the migrant farmers. You want to come in and farm your land for you. Maybe make a little money and produce a little produce or whatever. Uh, possible increase in crime. That's been, been addressed. Uh, more people working the narrow country road. I don't know that she goes, but I like living on a road with stripes on it. Okay. And that's why I moved to Amelia. Yes, it is. I moved to Amelia. Uh, I paid a lot to come to you. Okay. Built a nice barn and everything. And I like to live in a lot of places with stripes on it. And, uh, I don't want to commute right down the road from me, a socialistic country. And our country, as you all know, the wild generation, the butterflies out there, snowflakes. They were, they're desperately trying to change our country. I, I think that's a real threat and it's amazing. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Somerville and I live at 9200 South Amelia Ave. And I have never been more proud in my life than to provide the people in this county food, fresh, organic food. And the people in my generation don't have necessarily all the land access that they need to provide food for the people they want to provide food for, which is the people in this room and this county at large. And I support this rezoning application because it will allow people to have land access in a sustainable way that would not otherwise have the opportunity to live the kind of quaint life that has been brought up in this room. There is nothing more quaint, more beautiful, more enriching to the lives of a farmer, to the lives of the people around them, to spend a day picking berries, to develop land in such a way that heals lands, that heals the community, that brings the whole neighborhood together. And so I understand this is a big unknown. Um, I understand this is new. This is different. Um, I'm, I also, uh, in many of you, I've never seen your faces before. I am your neighbor. Um, and I hope that you would not find me threatening. Uh, just the same as I hope you would not find my peers threatening us saying they would work to provide food. That's what this is all about. Um, and that's why I support it. And it's because this is about nourishing the community. Um, so I hope that you all will take that into consideration that, you know, as you walk by, um, I hope you enjoy the food that has been provided. And I hope that, that this is something that you will look forward to. Um, just from my heart, this is what it's all about.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, just, just stand up. That's all I ask. If you don't want to come forward, main thing was just need to name and address.
Danbring 24520 at Lake, uh, the shoemaker comment, like the, the root of agrarian trust. And while we're talking vegetables, I think we all like the carrot. A lot of us who are older maybe understand the, the communist carrot that's offered. But I think the people talking with good hearts, good intentions, uh, they don't see the communist food coming. A lot of the people did.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I didn't plan on saying anything. My name's Paul Graves. I live at 17791 Rolling Meadows. Away to Riverdale. I'm down, going down the road, walking. I have a dog in the trust. Man back there, I think the world of him. But my thing is, I had to say this because, uh, the beef that they grow or the same thing else like the products is extremely expensive. I mean, when I sell up that farmers market, it's delicious. But I mean, it's probably about three times as high as what you're going to get in the grocery store. So you can't say that just because you're going to be able to grow this stuff, buy this, for all of them benefit from it. That's something they don't want to say about that. Like I said, I don't have any personal problems. Like I see you're in a wave tour. It's like a little, definitely likely young man back there. I think he is a good guy. But just because you're growing stuff and stuff doesn't mean that everybody in the camp, they're not going to grow enough to feed this whole county if something goes wrong. And I mean, they can't, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Uh, my name's Dave Isisrock. Uh, I live at 9540, 9550 South Amelia Avenue. My property borders the Walker farm. I don't have any. I don't have any problem against food production and vegetables. But when it's tied to what looks like a commune or anything that looks like a commune in these United States, I'm totally against it. This is not a socialist country, no matter how many people try to make it. Way. And I know we got the far left and the far right. So I'm thinking that there's got to be a happy medium. There's got to be training teaching farmers, there's got to be food production without having to rezone and dominate the land through what basically looks like a country. I didn't move to Amelia. I lived here part-time and I just totally against that kind of development, yes, so.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, speak up.
My name is Oliver Castle. I live at ninety-five hundred South Amelia Avenue. My land borders the proposed land by nearly four hundred feet. I'm opposed to the use of the land because I'm afraid that it will drastically evaluate my land and other people's land. And some of them that took me both of my lives to earn the ballot, very concerned about it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Angie Howard, South Amelia, before Callie, they have a fifth analyst left. But when she came to me and explained what her plan is going to be essential, not on this first step, our team. I have some questions probably directed toward Callie. She told me that she hoped that she would have, build a large farmhouse that would house up to twenty people while they learn to farm. Now, we've already pretty much established that we feel like it's going to be a tax-free situation because it's going to be a great house. That is a problem for not just us, all of Amelia. But she did express to me that she would like to see these people have, I'm quoting, alternative-style housing and how the like is that is. I feel sure I said large houses and I imagined that handhouses would be around twenty people. Alternative building is often stuff that people can do themselves or using materials that have less energy in them or that are more energy deficient. Is that similar to what you did or? The house that I lived in is a Cinnabon house of the T-one eleven. So that is older standard materials from the eighties. Yes, I assume you still live in the neighborhood. So Dan went to a class on building with plants. It lasted three weeks, it was in Oregon, he came home, he added a mudroom onto a shed. This was awesome and successful. It is now a hidden meditation room. And it looks like an Adobe and it makes the shed look very radiant. The other thing, question plus the half day. He said that that land that was there, well, it's not yours. But that is the same land that is on the map that you are going to be giving to the very council as far as I would say. So land across from someone who spoke was clear by this summer. By my sister, land on my property had a prime harvested five-inch area. Yes, and so that is absolutely a lot of property. Because of the different issues that have brought up, been brought up pretty much about what the eventual plans are, I agree with you. So we have spoken in that you cannot grow enough vegetables to build a home that is comparable to one in our community. And I see our property values wanting to do this. And I also, as some people have spoken and said, feel a security and safety issue with this on the road in general life in our homes. And I think that if this, if Callie and Dan live in a remote area, this would be an idea that would go well. But we have a large community there and this is not something that will fit in.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you, anyone else like to speak?
My name is Steve, I live at nine seven seven nine one Roland Meadows. I'm a little concerned, maybe I read a lot of people pointing out where maybe immigrants and transits could govern instead of mine and not form a way for us.
So it's one of my ideas that doesn't fit the zoning of Amelia County, so it's a never going place. But as a pastor to people who are, have an immigrant congregation, I've really learned that lots of migrant workers who come for a summer migrant season are young single fellows. And it just always seemed to me that they would miss that from being in a place where somebody cooked the meal every day and they had kind of house parents, kind of motherly host figure. What, I was frustrated with that, but it resulted in knowing that that was just a outdated part of my business, but it doesn't work. Well, I said, this is where my vision called me, is there anything going here that interests you or concerns you?
That, I don't think that deals with, yeah, and we go. All right, anyone else like to speak? If what, would you state that? Grow marijuana, I think. Got to have a license.
I don't have a license to grow pot. I've never grown or used pot. It's a legal substance, I guess, it's legal, I'm not entirely against it, although I'd get you pranked if you keep my soul.
Anyone else like to speak on the subject?
I just wanted to add to my thoughts that I'm in here. For, well, this is a bar, established residential medical position. But I would like to point out, the men and church have to have the general, but they're all untouchable property. And it's not like the men and church have, you know, a lot of traffic just from them, from their homeschool program, their school programs, and they gave the meaning, get light pollution from their car headlights. And so it's not like our neighborhood has been closed-minded, shut down, or doesn't have nonprofit, non-capital property.
Anyone else like to speak about?
I feel right here, but.
Go ahead.
My name's Eric Swan, I'm from South Golden Land, Minneapolis, Virginia. I want to know, it's this whole community, what benefits us if you turn all that land to something that would never generate tax revenue for this community? Again, once you do that, most of us, say, me and Mr. Stone, Mr. Gold, whoever, what would stop most of our buying a hundred eighteen acres, getting you to put it in a trust and letting us all build million-dollar houses and live there for free the rest of our life?
You can't build a house on nonprofit land.
So, so they get their houses, so why are you zoning? If you can't build a house on nonprofit land?
Not saying we're zoning it yet, we're just hearing this.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks for speaking. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Sherwin, two four five four two Patton Lane. So the group that's going to be title holder in perpetuity. Five oh one C. So the county, as well as the state, this is tax revenue. So between the county and the state, they've got to make up that revenue. And the products that these individuals are going to be growing and selling, that's not tax collectible either. Because that's all part of the five oh one C. So therefore, that leaves the state as well as the county to recruit that tax revenue loss back to the citizens. So that's something else that I think we all need to consider.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak before closing? Yes, sir. Wait a minute.
We're seventeen six eleven seventeen six twenty-one Amelia Avenue. A lot of us opposed to this because of all the aforementioned. I was born with nothing, come from charity, I still got most of that nothing left. What I do think about what's more, and I've seen the former, and your intentions are admirable. But I've always heard the ruin of hell is taking. And I just want to state for the record that we are opposed to this.
Thank you, sir.
Can you repeat your last name one more time?
Will, W I L M O T A.
Yes, ma'am, a lady in the back wanted to speak again.
I just want to add that we have had a good turnout here this evening. But we only found out about this three weeks ago today or yesterday. And if we had known earlier, we had, we would have had, I am sure, a much larger turnout because people are just finding out about this. And what we proposed is, I have had people approach me today and one of my other neighbors just said today and said they didn't know about it until they today or last night and they would have been here had they not, and every time it would be, I'm sure if we had known earlier on, would have had a much, much larger group opposing this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I have to pronounce my name.
Slow down. I talk fast, but you talk a little fast. And your first name? Second name? Okay, you get it?
I live very close to the property and I never spoke to Swan, I'm probably just came out of my backyard. So I'm very concerned, she mentioned she's talked to her neighbors. She'd never come to my house because I would have loved to have heard about the project. They're trying to do this to my, their whole thing, that's how I found out about it. And I'm very concerned about the safety, I've been here four years. And the immigrants or black or Spanish, the safety issues. And I have concern about the way I've been walking all night up my street. You know, it's something that's hard to date, trains and coast. It is a concern for me and my wife and my family. You know, to have this type of project literally in the dirt from my, I don't want to say it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Bannon back hasn't spoken yet. That you?
My name's Steve Swan, I live at nine six six nine seven Amelia Avenue. And I've been reading, I'm delighted to have reconciliation work, you know, about. Quite numerous, but anyway, I have no doubt in my mind that it's not easy possibility. I live to teach people and farm at the length of the period. There's been professional people that's farmed all their life. I believe there's some personally, there's people that they're not attending parts of production, even for your own family. So I'll have absolutely.
Okay, sir. Thank you for speaking. Do you like to repeat your name? I'll make sure. Okay.
This is from the Schumacher Society, the fairing organization of the eighteen thirty firm. As we believe that a fair and organic economy is possible, that's the disimportant interest in building systems to achieve it. Our natural balance are best served by original people. Money issue can't be democratized. Ownership should be more diversified, and the labor should have a part in ownership structure. I've studied a lot about social revolution and communism and stuff, and this stuff straight out of the pages of our laws. Only a question is, I've heard wonderful things about Callie. And I said, it's not a personal question. Are you familiar with, with these actual people, these organizations, you're handing this land over, this letting our people? And it's a great one, it's not so much about her, maybe it's her set, it's about the ten gang here, but the sin camp.
I'm sure she'll look into that. See, she's heard a lot of comments, we've heard a lot of comments. So I'm sure she has things on her paper that she'd like to look into, just like we would. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. Name it, name and address.
My name is Robert Walker and I live in the Oliver Farm Community down the road. My address is ninety-five thirty White Irish Way. I built the house here in two thousand and five. And I've been here and I love this community. And her father, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Bo, right there, was the first people that came to me to welcome me to the neighborhood. I know I'm like a chap of the white building. But it don't make no difference to me because I get along with anybody. But what I want to say is this, I have got an education here tonight, how you gonna say? I have got an education here tonight, I did not know any of this was going to work. About three or four days ago, my neighbor here asked me, you going to the meet with me? I said, yeah, I'm going, because I don't know what they doing. But I love Callie because her father provided me with vegetables, man. He had a sign up there, pick what you want. And I did. And I hated when he passed away. But to say all that, is to say this. I love this community and I love it the way it is. And I like walking in my development because walking on the Amelia Avenue, some fool tried to run me over. He tried to run my neighbors over. But like I, like what I let him know, that six o'clock in the morning don't mean that you got a free run at me because when he, when he came off the road, four feet off the road, it gets me to jump down in the ditch. And I came up out of that ditch like this. He ain't come back down the road though. Because I'm not giving up my walking. But neighbors and friends, I know you and I know, I think I know the gentleman over there pulling out the ditch over there with my foot. And I love this neighborhood. And this community and stuff, I don't know nothing about it. I'm going to fix their cup and I don't need no mess. I mean, I want everybody to understand what I'm saying. Because any fool who come up to buy a house, he better be packing. I ain't niggas about sharing walk, but if I ain't walking too. I'm walking tall and I will put you in your grave. Come out, come back.
Thank you, sir.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Anyone else like to speak before I close the public hearing? This is not the last public hearing, remember you have the board supervisors. No matter what, what we say or when we say it, we have three months to come up with a decision. But the board supervisor has the final say. But we would like to hear as many comments possible because we try to pass them on to the board supervisor members. We'll have two new ones coming on in January, so got to remember about that. Those are board supervisors, they can override us. All we do is give, try to get the information compiled, hear things. It just gives to the five making decision, got the twelve of us kind of giving them one way or the other. It doesn't mean that what we say is right or wrong, they have the final say, period. Ninety days. Not only we can defer twice, and that's it, we have to come up with decisions. If we don't, it goes straight to the board supervisors and they come up with the decision. Yes, ma'am, board meeting the third Wednesday of every month.
Yes, and all direct joiners will get letters again like the one you got for this one, you'll get another one for the board.
Any more questions? Ma'am? Board of supervisors to Holly. She will, she will get them to the right people. Any more questions before I close the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Will the notification by board supervisor be put in the monitor paper plaque for the meeting?
Has to be two weeks ahead.
Well, I mean, about the concerns about what's going to happen at that board supervisor.
Yes, sir, two weeks ahead to be listed. And I'm sure the man behind me will make sure that happens. Any more questions or comments before I close? Period. Real quick.
I wonder how many of y'all wrote your own things, like?
Okay. All comments? Any more comments? Any more comments? Go three times, close the public hearing. So now all speaking will be done with plan commission members, understand? Thank, I want to thank you everyone for coming again. We hear, hear you loud and clear, both sides. That we'll have to come up with some decision, whether it's tonight or next month or January. But do appreciate everyone showing up. Thank you. Can I leave the clock down so we can go back into our meeting? You're welcome to leave or you're welcome to stay. No, we need, needs to be able to hear each other, okay? All right. Any more questions? The planning commission members.
I got something out if you hear me yet.
Yes. The couple, the couple that is, are they farming on your property?
Summerville, thank you, Summerville.
Yeah, they live in our house, we have four bedroom house, we have two bedrooms. And then we have sixteen acres in the parcel, but they have lease purchases.
That's not part of this.
That's that something.
So the house on that property, no house, just a?
They won't put a house until they complete the purchase party, lease purchase.
Any more questions?
Go ahead, Rich, I got one more, I'm not going to talk for a minute.
Okay. Don't know what to ask.
I know I'm a big picture person, but the details of how we know that, I'm looking for.
Any more questions?
I have a question, I thought I just read somewhere where you actually wanted to build a house that was housed. Oh, you might have read that Barbara Addis letters, but I don't think I did. I don't know. But I was trying to envision what that house would be like. Well, maybe a retirement, maybe part of retirement living, personally, I would like, if I were ever to get with her, I would like a sort of a old style of old lady, um, like living, but, um.
I talked to you six or eight months ago about this, but I was under the impression you were going to start, going to RTN to something about it, and you tend to lots. And you said, you said you were going to want to build a farming community. And so I thought that people would buy the lots, and then if they wanted, I mean, you talk about somebody wanted twenty acres, take it by two lots. Back together. My reservation on the plan here now is not just the loss of tax revenue. But people come in there, they're going to give them the land, a little bit of use, free, trust is. They have no ownership, they have no stake in it. They're there for two or three months, so I don't like this, I'm going to move on somewhere else, someone else. We turned that farming complex that year, the original one, a year ago, because we don't see people coming in and staying a month, believe you go, something like, they'll say, no stake in that community. And I'm seeing same similar situation being created here.
So one of the ways that farm leases work, helping farmers, if they prove that they can, the farming actually is the life for them, they test it out, they actually, it is the life for them, and it's the place for them. Then we make ninety-nine year leases that can pass to their children. So they have control of the land. They have managerial control, the land is still restricted into farm use. I didn't know that part about not building on my profits, that might be a deal stopper. But the thing in the plan is that it's much like owning a condo, you own your house, you can sell the value of that. But the land cannot sell.
It's true, I always say it's in the trust name. You'll never get a dime while I'm going to somebody to build a house if they don't own it.
Is he right?
So.
Well, that might be correct.
I'm pretty sure.
If you're glad or you got to. And I've got a question for her too. RTN's, what type of houses?
Family dwellings and.
Single wives, single moms.
Hmm, I don't know about double wives.
I don't know, it's not asking.
I think the answer is double.
All right. In RTN, mobile homes, you can have double wives and single wives, you can have single family dwellings. That's the only residential.
So you can, you can have single wife mobile home? I see that being a problem, people's got, they don't have houses across the street.
Any more questions, Cali or among us? A lot of people talked tonight, probably the biggest group we've had in quite a while.
Are you down in the wool with those trucks? Or would you be open to going and going in other directions? Because someone mentioned, people don't have a financial stake in the town. It really doesn't mean a lot, it's a tent. I know that's way to get, I mean, that, you know, you give them something, they didn't have to buy, they just care about it.
Right, and I'm sure that, looking to make gifts, I'm looking to donate land or project that I believe, okay, I get to sit in the board of directors. Homeowners, well, not landowners, they are homeowners, if we're not stopped by being a nonprofit to begin with. Homeowners are also on the board of directors. So it's, to me, it's awfully comparable to my dad being part of starting Southern States back when it really was a cooperative. I hope not to be all too involved in that because he was really mad when it changed, and maybe you fell out with him. But, but it's just, to me, it seems so similar to be able to provide that cooperative farming setup. Profit and food production per acre is in small acreage right now. And it is in small acreage without big machinery, where you don't have dental, that kind of stuff. So it, it, it looks non-viable, right, farming on ten acres. And it looks like you have to clear cut hardwoods.
Well, ten acres, if it's timber, if you can grow anything other than timber, you're going to have to clear it, I mean, nothing grows without light, nothing grows without water.
We're not at all committed to maxing out ten. They will be that the nature of the first two or three families that really stay and last are such that that makes sense, and we divest the land that way.
But it does go back to the fact that Roy or someone else has stated, you know, I farmed all my life. Somebody comes tell me, you know, you got to fence out all your creeks. I've been clearing, I haven't picked up enough sticks to, I could have beat thousands of people with as kids. And I hate to go back in there and put that sucker back in trees. And, you know, I got to raise more crops for the cows that I got to feed, because I got to fence out land. You know, that's, it's, uh, and if farmer's not in your blood, you're not going to stay with it, because it's, I mean, it's, it's seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days, seven twenty-four, I mean. And, uh, I mean, you can, and you can grow small acres, you can grow strawberries and things like that, make good money. If you don't have a frog, you know, different, I think. And I think a lot of young farmers don't realize you're not going to make a profit every year. You'd be lucky if you make a profit every ten years.
We've absolutely given a try and say, this is not the life for us, and thank God, we learned that before we purchased land and ended up.
But you know, we, we do have a lot of acres in the county that people could, if they wanted to, could grow crops. I mean, some of the neighbors that had ten acres. I mean, your house doesn't take but half an acre, I mean, you got nine and a half acres. People want to grow radishes or whatever you want to do. But another guy spoke too, you know. You can't. People fuss at Food Line, but Food Line feeds a lot of people that can't afford that high dollar stuff. And, uh, and, you know, to grow quantities, it takes equipment and land, and that's what feeds the people. I mean, you can buy stuff local, and I have a lot of people that do it, and, you know, it's, it's good, but I mean, that's only about ten percent of population that can afford that. I mean, I'm not doubting anything, but I mean, I think if they don't have a stake in that land, whether they have a ninety-nine lease or not, it's going to be hard for them to stay. And then especially if you can't build a house on there, what's the collateral to back it up? I mean, armed credit ain't going to give it, because I've borrowed enough money through them lately that I know what they want.
Yeah. A very, and trust is as trustworthy as I think they are, I do have a two-year relationship with them at this point. I have not looked into whether a parent organization might have helped start them, so I don't know about that. But if they're genuine and legitimate, then once they receive a land donation, they use their donor base to seek fundraising to match the value of the land. So then that becomes an internal lending source we have for people who don't have.
I mean, it's got to have some besides outside things.
And let's go back to the part about you can't build on a.
Well, a lady said, God said he going to build a five hundred thousand dollar home on a nonprofit land, and that ain't going to happen, I don't care where you are.
You can't put something, a dwelling of some kind, or you can't put a.
I would think he could. But I think it'd have to be backed by whoever owns the land, not the person that, that lost the house.
Do you think these people are going to live on the state of parks, right?
Yes.
So it's going to be hard, ask Larkin, they farm hundreds of acres, it's hard to make a living. And, and you can ask why, it's, it's difficult to do, maybe the interest organic stuff that's more valuable or more costly to sell. But at the same time, my concern is, and I'm going to be going to build a two hundred thousand dollar house based on your farming on ten acre. I foresee the insupstan in your housing, which is going to devalue your neighborhood, and it's going to make some people mad.
I think that's a very legitimate observation and concern.
They just can't afford it.
I can already see that my house is low in the neighborhood, it has been since nineteen eighty-five, no doubt about that. Every house that's been built since nineteen eighty-five is of double or triple, four times the values. No doubt about it. And I, yeah, I think many, uh, beginning farmer who really is committed to the life and wants it, would need to start theirs own.
That, that, firstly, I think single wives, even double wives.
I agree. I would, I want to see that.
Now, the only thing it was, if they really want in the, on the farm, they'd leave there, go find some land in the county or not county, or whatever. Buy that land and use that same crop, and the only thing that would hurt them would be if it buries or fruit or something, where you have to get the trees some off, you know, certain age, where they're really mature enough. Thank you, but, uh.
I mean, my opinion, the best for your work would be if you leased an acre or two people, things for them. That way, they would, they would have the best interest, you lease it to them. There's no transfer, no need for return, they farm their ten acres, they figure that it's not for them, they move on. They'll arm up, they just won't be able to live there.
Any more questions?
Well, I, I think that, uh, I think there's one, very wild here, and that, uh, they don't need some time to be able to restore. We, we do farming on, on what's pretty good size scale for here, but, you know, in the other parts of the country, we'd be small. So things are relative. We look after about twenty-five hundred acres. But, uh, I've done gardening too. Let me tell you, one acre of garden is a lot of golf. Five acres of garden and berries and so forth is a lot. So I, I, uh, it depends on the intensity of what you're doing. And so I'm not going to pronounce it, somebody can't. You know, do, do whatever, uh, as far as the farmer is concerned, I think I do know something about that. But, uh, you do have to take into account your neighborhood. And you know, that's what's from, from probably, it's here. And I, uh, his concerns. And he said, some of them are, uh, some of it is, it, you know, has some, some, certainly some substance and legitimacy to it. Uh, some of it is probably based on. Uh, some of it is probably based on, uh, some, uh, lack of development at this point, and this often happens. Uh, you, you're saying, uh, and, or has something to do with, with, uh, some of your ideas that, that don't involve this project? We can only look at this project, this pro. I'm wondering if, uh, in order to have time to absorb this, and with, uh, holiday season and so forth next month, if, uh, if our best approach might not be to consider about a sixty-day deferral.
Is that a motion?
I, I, I will, I'm, I'm kind of asking walkers how it is to do it.
I say we are having a December meeting regardless, there are several other things, so there will be a December meeting, even if you choose sixty days.
What is the date of that December?
December twenty-seventh.
Um, I definitely, I would have been to a deferral, I don't feel strongly about whether it should be thirty days or sixty days.
Well, the members think?
Well, we're voting on most of hand now, right?
What we're voting on is from an R R three to an R ten.
So we.
We're not, we're not voting on whether, whatever the land is given to, like, I could give my land to the trust tomorrow, I guess.
What changes?
Only.
What changes if we defer? With thirty days, sixty days, or whatever, it's gonna come back and sit just like it is right now, right?
No, not necessarily at all, she can, she can make adjustments.
Now, where she can make adjustments pulling it out of the trust, or going into a different trust, or she can look into a trust.
But the public won't be able to sit in the next meeting with it.
They can sit in it, they can sit in it, but they can't.
Speak their voice.
Can't speak their voice, because it won't be a public hearing.
She has time to talk to her neighbors and all, and some of these ones that she has in her, I'm try, I'm trying to, uh, I, I know this, you know, I know, you know, I think everybody would like to, to see some, uh, more understanding, and people, uh, be able to, to, uh, you, you know, achieve a better outcome. And that's true of, uh, of both sides of this issue. And so the reason I'm suggesting this kind of a sixty-day timeframe, we still have opportunity for another deferral of thirty after that. But that allows time for things to season and melt here, and, um, so I'll make that a motion, defer for sixty days.
Motion been made in first sixty, did I get second?
Yes, I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion?
Only thing I worry about on the deferral is just that public won't get to speak, and I.
They'll speak to the board supervisors.
Because we're board supervisors.
Since it wasn't a joint public hearing, they did get their own public hearing.
Okay, okay, part, I am, I got.
So if anything else changes, it'll come before, the board supervisors won't come before us. I mean, we might have some things or other vote.
I'm good with that, as long as they can voice their.
Now, they'll get a, they get another public hearing.
Started the mailbox, they, they right there, and not all of them. They might not like the idea, but they like.
Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to defer for sixty days, January meeting, making known by saying aye? All opposed, same side? Motion carried, we'll hear it again, or vote on it in January. And I assume December, we'll have the solar project notice, they defer to January, or if we have something else in December. Does anyone else have any other business? Holly did say we will have a C I P meeting.
Yeah, for just for the C I P committee.
December twentieth, if any of y'all other members would like to sit in on it, be one o'clock in this room, it's up to y'all. But I think at five, four or five o'clock now.
But your January meetings will remind us of which list the work is, all right?
I don't have anything else, anyone else have anything?
And you're gonna send an email on the C I P?
Yes, I'll send mine in the morning.
And, uh, so I appreciate everyone coming out. Like I say, this is probably the biggest grab we've had in quite a while on any, I knew it was gonna be a question, but I didn't realize when I came in here, you couldn't even get a parking. For not to be a, not to be a.
We could have gotten this many in the quarter.
I'd be tight.
If we keep having these kind of projects, we're gonna have to do something.
So, uh, we'll join the meeting, see you next month, have a nice Thanksgiving, don't eat too much turkey if you can find it.